I believe I have seven o'clock Bernie, do you have seven o'clock?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Well, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, January 7, 2021, meeting of the Planning Board. As a preliminary mayor, this is Chairman Steven Boulay. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Rota Lakus.
Present.
Mr. Jerry.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Is Mr. Truman on tonight?
He is not going to be able to join us now.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, good evening. This open meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Shrewsbury Planning Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff member who has a lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second, please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquial key with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote will be taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. To confirm the phone number for tonight's meeting, I have 1-512-953-7657 with a PIN number 846199207 pound. With that, I will take us to our first item of business, which is to review, if you want to approve minutes. We have minutes from July 9, 2020, as well as December 3, 2020. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comment relative to the two minutes meetings that I mentioned? Mr. Rota Lakus.
No comments.
Mr. Jerry.
No questions or comments.
Mr. Thomas.
No questions or comments.
I have no questions or comments either, or entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. The next item of business to review and sign bills, we have one bill for $1,507 for Graves Engineering for work done at 5 to 9 Centec Boulevard. Mr. Rota Lakus will recuse himself from this vote. Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the expenditures as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
The Boulay is in favor as well. Next, come to our next item, which is board member comments. Normally I go around the board first, but today I have an announcement to make. I need to announce that Mel Gordon has decided to retire from this board after 25 years of service. Mel has been on the board presiding over many of the changes that this community has experienced for, well, on nearly three decades. I personally want to thank Mel for his extensive community service as well as his mentoring to me since I came on the board. Mel's input and perspective, as well as his depth of knowledge for rules and regulations relative to the planning activities this community needs will certainly, certainly sorely be missed. You know, if anyone in the listening audience has an interest in joining the board, please reach out to the town manager's office. With that, I will move to the, around the board, to Mr. Rota Lakus.
I just want to, you know, wish Mel well post-retirement from the board. He was dedicated, fair, and entertaining. I'm not sure in what order, but certainly he will be missed. I know he's not going anywhere, but he'll be missed. And the town will certainly miss as many years of service. Again, he's a friend and he'll always be a friend, but I'm going to miss him as a board member.
Thank you, Mr. Rota Lakus. I agree with you. Mr. Thomas.
I'd also like to wish Mel the best as personally knowing Mel for over 20 years. He's just a great guy. I learned a lot from him coming on the board. He will be sorely missed by me. I don't know what enough good things to say about him. He's gone, but he's not forgotten. And Mel, if you're out there listening, thanks for everything and thanks for everything you did for this town.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Jerry.
Thank you. No, I would just echo those comments. I'd like to congratulate Mel and thank him for all the years of service on behalf of the town of Shrewsbury. He's very kind and generous to the town to, to support the planning board and all the initiatives over the years and grateful for his service.
Thank you. Emily, I think that's a record for a number of comments we've had at these meetings for some time now. Mel, you set another record for us. With that, I'll move on to our first meeting, which is a continued public hearing, which Mr. Rota Lakus will be accusing himself. This public hearing is for an office building with garage site plan approval. M E Realty LLC, location 5 and 9 Centec Boulevard. Is, I believe that there is a continuance request for this hearing to our next meeting, which is scheduled for February 4, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Do I have any questions or comments relative to the continuance request? Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions or comments, sir.
Mr. Jerry.
I also have no questions or comments.
I have no questions or comments either. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the site plan approval for the office building with garage M and E Realty LLC, 5 and 9 Centec Boulevard to our February, what is the date?
Four.
Our February 4 meeting, 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Our next public hearing is a new public hearing for a duplex for disabled persons, site plan approval, accessible housing for children, elders, and disabled LLC, location 270 Green Street. Mr. Thomas, could you please read the public notice?
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 7, 2021, at 7:00 PM to hear the application of accessible housing for children, elders, and disabled LLC, 325 Donald Lynch Boulevard, Suite 100, Marlborough, Mass., 01752, for site plan approval by the planning board as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 7, subsection F3, to allow for the construction of a duplex for disabled persons at 270 Green Street. Process development is shown on plans entitled Site Plan of Land on Green Street in Six Sheets, dated December 14, 2020, prepared by Thompson List and Associates, Incorporated, 51 Main Street, PO Box 570, Boylston, Mass., 01505. The subject property is located on the northwesterly side of Green Street and south of Fortune Boulevard and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Accesses Tax Plate 55, Plot 006001. A copy of the plans may be seen on the planning board's website at HTTPS colon slash slash
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Do we have the applicants present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we are here. I'm James Tedrow from Thompson List and Associates here with Jim Vannacasa of representing the applicant. And if we can, we'd like to share a screen to, as part of this presentation.
Please do.
So. And go to the A and R plan.
Sorry, it's our first time doing this.
Don't worry.
Talk to the tab. They're just going to give us the tabs. I didn't have to share the file. I'm going to try this, share from the file, sorry. See if this works.
Now go down two sheets.
Now, can you see this?
I see your file folder. I do not see a plan.
Plan didn't come up. Keep it a second.
Is that still the case?
That's still the case. Is the A and R buffer still the file folder?
I just see the file folder. I don't know about anybody else.
Just the file folder.
I can present if you'd like. I have the file.
Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. That's what I'm here for.
Sometimes it's like the Get Smart cone of silence.
All right. Can everyone see the plan now?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you would go to the third of those three sheets, that will show the lot in question. There you go. The lot in question is shown on this is Lot 5. It's designated as 270 Green Street. As you see, it's on the north side of Green Street. The only remaining land of the Centec Park East subdivision was divided into two lots several months ago. Lot 5, this one here, 3.05 acres, and Lot 6 next to it, to the west of it, of 17 and change acres, and Lot 6 goes all the way out to Centec Boulevard and to Fortune Boulevard. But this is the lot in question, this 3.05 acre parcel. And the land plan shows you that there are multiple easements in play on this lot and that in part determine the location of things that you'll see on the next sheet. I'm going to ask Bernie to please jump to the site plan. So maybe go to the third sheet. Maybe zoom in just yep. So what you see there is the, is a driveway entrance on Green Street at the best point for site distance, where you see the sort of J-shaped driveway coming out, yep, where he's got the cursor. And you, the two structures you see there are a proposed duplex building further away from Green Street, the sort of H-shaped building, and a little closer, a sort of polygon-shaped garage building. And we can't put the two together because of the limitations of space with the various easements. To the left, excuse me, to the right or to the east of the proposed duplex of the H-shaped building is an existing detention basin. Immediately below or to the south of the H-shaped building is a drainage easement. There are a couple of existing drainage lines, a couple of different ones that go through there. On the left side of that H-shaped building, the proposed duplex is a water and a gas easement which brings service up to Fortune Boulevard. So it's kind of hemmed in in space and that's why we couldn't put the garage contiguous with it. So we propose a driveway to come up to serve this facility. We have, we show now to the right side of the garage an infiltration structure such that the overall drainage will work and that was, I think, agreed to in the review by the board's peer reviewer Graves Engineering. And we show on the various slopes here, we have two to one and a very small piece of one-to-one slope to the southwest, off the southwest corner of the garage. We're just trying to stay outside of the 100-foot buffer zone and not, not encroach in that. And that's why in that very small area, it's only 40 feet wide at its widest, that there is, is any steeper than two to one proposed here. Again, it's a duplex and the reason we're in front of you, the reason is that is because it's a duplex and the purpose of this building is to serve for the mass association of the blind. They also do not just services for the blind, but for those needing rehabilitation from various sorts of injuries and maladies. And in this case, rehabilitation is largely for folks who have suffered some kind of a stroke. That's what this particular facility will serve. It will serve for the rehabilitation of people who are working their way back from having suffered a stroke. And the need for, you know, so it's, it needs a bit of extra space. It doesn't need, and this particular use is not, you know, the kind of use that you, you feel you have to have a primo residential property for. There's, there's really no one around immediately adjacent to this. Up the hill of this to the north is the Altech Inc. site where they work on boom trucks. Yep. Off to the east and northeast is the Milton Proquip site, which rents various kinds of equipment, scissor lifts, all sorts of things. Almost across the street, but really sort of to the southwest is the Graff and Job Works site. So, you know, there's not, I think the nearest of butter is, I'll get the exact distance wrong, is 800 to 1,000 feet to the east, I believe is Mr. Stillman on, on Green Street. But this is just going to be a duplex. There aren't going to be special lighting or parking here. It's just a residential use. And we are just in front of you folks asking for site plan approval because any duplex requires that the board issue site plan approval. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. And if there's any questions, I'll try and answer them or the applicant, Jim Vannacasa.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'll first go around the board. Mr. Rota Lakus.
No, I, it, it does not appear to be a use that would overburn the site. I guess my only concern is, is about the garage as there's a reference in the application that the garage may be used for other facilities. And I'm not sure that fits squarely within the Dover Amendment, exemption. It's really not, it's not entirely accessory to this, to the use, to the duplex.
So as of right now, we are, we're proposing it with the use of this, of the duplex. We know that, you know, if we were going to change the use to use it for other things, that we would have to come back into the board for, you know, a different, you know, for approval for that.
Is it, is this property going to be transferred to the user?
Yeah. So what it is, it's actually a capital lease. So we do sign a long-term lease with them with a deed restriction on the property. And they, you know, they'll buy it out, whether it's 10, 20 years down the road, but yes, it is a capital lease that they're signing.
So they're, so they're going to end up owning the garage as well?
Yeah, that's, that's the intent right now. I mean, it's, you know, whatever they do in 10, 20 years, I guess would be up to them, but as of right now, the intent is to have the nonprofit own both.
Maybe you could get us the, those documentations. You could redact the financial components of it just so.
Yeah, there's some stuff, like I could send you like the barb of it to show the, you know, that it's a, yeah, that's fine.
That's all, because, because a garage would be in allowed use, I believe, down there and
Yeah.
The, you know, but the only issue is you'd have to come in. There might be, you'd have to comply with zoning potentially, to the extent that it was used for, for something outside accessory use as to the duplex.
And pursuant to the point Mr. Rota Lakus is making, I, one of the things I forgot to mention at the start of this is that this is in the limited industrial zoning district. Just to
Yeah, so you are correct. So they do allow garages over here. And also we did conform to the setbacks. Those jogs that are in the, in the garage that conforms to the setbacks of
I don't think it's a big deal, but I just want to make you aware of it. That's all.
Yes.
Yeah, I think to your point, Mr. Rota Lakus, we could certainly condition that when the, the approval is granted, if, if approval was granted. Any other questions, Mr. Rota Lakus?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry.
My questions were all related to the garage slash warehouse as well, and I feel as those, those have been addressed, so I have no other comments or questions.
Mr. Thomas.
I actually have no other comments. I think my comments echo everyone else's comments. Are we going to see a rendering of the duplex?
Yeah, I thought it would.
We will, we will submit floor plans for the duplex. We had some, excuse me.
No, we did, we did the duplex.
We didn't send the garage.
The garage, yeah, we were, yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, yeah, we can send over. I can do that now.
My apologies. Yes, I did. We did see, the renderings of the duplex were kind of, hold on, let me get back to it here. Give me half a second. Yep, okay. It was the garage, yes.
Yep. Yes, I can send that over.
Okay, that was my only concern.
Those now, okay.
The only concern, not necessarily concern, but questions I have is I believe there's some outstanding issues relative to response to the town planners' questions as well as Graves Engineering. Is that correct, Mr. Cahill?
Yes, that is correct. We're waiting on responses to the peer review letter and my letter, so I anticipate those in the coming next few days, next week. I also anticipate the revisions for the garage to say just garage by the next time. And I think your idea Steve for a possible condition is a reasonable one when there is doubt or concerns by the board to put the board at ease. I think that's reasonable. It's also worth saying for those watching at home, why residential and an industrial zone under what's called the Dover Amendment, which is the nickname for, or shorthand for a section of the Mass General Law, which allows religious and educational uses to locate pretty much anywhere in town, however, with reasonable limitations on it through zoning in terms of setbacks. So hence, this is covered under that Dover Amendment and hence in the limited industrial area. But other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Very good. I do not have any other questions or comments. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing as I don't hear anything for public comment, I will entertain a motion to continue this meeting to February 4, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
I move that we continue the site plan review for the 270 Green Street project until February 4, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rota Lakus.
In favor.
Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. We'll see you next month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next public hearing is a new public hearing for a medical office, site plan approval and special permit, Louven Realty LLC, new public hearing. Perna Rao will be sitting in on this meeting as we'll be talking about a special permit. If Mr. Thomas could please read the public notice.
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, January 7, 2021, at 7:00 PM to hear the application of Louven Realty LLC, 40 Vinyl Street, Hudson, Mass., 01749, for site plan approval as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 7, F3, and special permit as required by section 6, D, Aquafer Protection Overlay District by the planning board to allow for the construction of a medical office, parking and associated improvements at 235 Main Street. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled Proposed Medical Office at 235 Main Street in 11 sheets dated December 16, 2020, prepared by JM Grenier Associates, Incorporated, 235 Donald Lynch Boulevard, Suite 100, Marlborough, Mass., 01752. Subject property is located northly of Main Street and westerly side of Irida Road and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessors Tax Plate 20, Plot 024000. A copy of the plans may be seen on the planning board's website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is the applicant available?
Mr. Chairman, may it please the board and thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name for the record is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney representing Louven Realty. My offices are at 11 Maple Avenue in Shrewsbury. With us from Louven Realty tonight is Vincent Messina. He is a manager of Louven Realty. I'm not sure if Dr. Messina is with us. Okay, she's, she's not.
I'm the Vin of Lou Vin. Dr. Messina is the Lou and she's the majority stakeholder by one percentage, two percentage points. So she ordered that I take the call.
And also with us tonight is John Grenier from JM Grenier Associates. Before I give a very brief introduction, and because we didn't get a chance to say it, I just have to tell you that I loved Mel Gordon and every one of the meetings that he was in. And, you know, he was at every meeting and every ZBA meeting and I will always chuckle about him if he can use the pool when it's built, that he gives a variance for, for the sideline. He always said, can I, can I be invited to the pool party? So he was a fun guy. He is a fun guy and I, I hope the best for him and it was a nice tribute that you gave him. So with respect to this proposal, this site has a long history of commercial use. Those of us that are old enough, and I'm not going to pretend to say all of us are old enough to remember it as the old Lungren and Genitis property. Lungren and Genitis was there since 19, early 1950s. And after Lungren and Genitis got sold to Whittier Dairy, it became the distribution plant for Whittier Dairy and, and Whittier Farms. In 2009, we proceeded, and I was involved in this, we proceeded with a permit for Shriver Home Nursing Services. That got permitted at the ZBA and never went any further. And then in 2015, you may recall that we were in front of you for permits for a much larger office building, medical office building. It was 8,000 square feet at this same site for Dr. Zachariah, who eventually ended up staying in Worcester. So that building never got built. This proposal is for dental and medical. I would, I would say dental is probably, I hope you would consider it medical to a degree, to the degree necessary for this permit. Songbird Dental, you may be familiar with it, is in the center of town now and they would relocate to this building once it's built. So that is the plan, is to put Songbird Dental here. They've been in town for, Vin, you can tell me how many years in the center of town?
Little over four, five, five. It'll go five in the middle of this year, so four and a half years.
Okay, so you know, they need to move because of what's going on in their building up there, so this proposal is born to need them to relocate. They want to stay in Shrewsbury. They have a good clientele in Shrewsbury. This is for a 4,080 square foot building. We have already been to the ZBA and they did grant us a variance after that, that hearing. We are scheduled to be in front of the Conservation Commission and we understand that this meeting will have to be continued until the Conservation Commission and, uh, we understand that this meeting will have to be continued until the Conservation Commission is, is, um, done with their deliberations. Uh, so, uh, with that, uh, in mind and knowing that, uh, most of this is engineer-related, um, and, uh, I have reviewed, uh, the, uh, comment letters, uh, I'll turn it over to John Grenier to address the rest of this, if I could.
Thank you very much, Richard. And, uh, I am actually, uh, old enough to remember the old Lundgren Genitis, and with seven kids, we had, uh, I think deliveries twice a week from the old Lundgren Genitis. Um, but, uh, to go off what Richard was saying, we are proposing a 4,080 square foot medical building. Uh, this site is located, uh, on the western main. It is in two zoning districts. Uh, it's split between Burlby and Residence B1 Zone District. And it is also, uh, split with a, in the Aquifer Protection, both a Zone 3 and a Zone 2. Not our protection zoning district, we are required, um, if you have greater than 15% block coverage, you are, you have requirements for recharge, which, uh, and that's a permit, which, uh, obviously, we're doing that.
Mr. Grenier, can I, can I interrupt you for a moment, please? Your, your mic is going in and out, so I don't know if there's, um, it's a bandwidth thing or... So I'm, I'm, I'm losing a few of your words. I'm not sure if anybody else is.
Is it? How's this now? I'll hold my, I think maybe my speaker was getting blocked a little bit.
That's, that's better. Thank you.
Is that better? Okay, okay, thank you for that. Um, so with the 4,080 square foot medical office building, under the zoning, we are required to have, uh, five spaces per thousand square feet, which, um, leads to a requirement for 21 parking spaces. Uh, we are providing a parking field in the front portion of the building and on the easterly side of the building, and that is a total of 28 parking spaces in the, the north, uh, easterly side of the site. At the end of that driving aisle, we are proposing a, uh, a small dumpster pad that will be screened. So we're, uh, although I, I don't believe that they are a, a heavy waste, um, producer, uh, we do, we do provide area for that, and that will be screened. Um, we did receive comments from, uh, Plan Department, Graves Engineering, and the Engineering Department. Um, we just received those within the past week or so, and, uh, as Richard stated, we haven't been before the Conservation Commission yet. Uh, we did review all of those comments, and, uh, we don't think that there is anything that really, uh, dramatically have any changes to, uh, the site plan as you see it right now, but, uh, nothing that is insurmountable, but insurmountable that we can't, uh, address with some minor modifications, uh, changes of labels and, and double checking a few things. Um, as you know, this is a vacant site right now. Uh, the, any of the, the buildings on there have long been gone. There are good soils. We did testing with Graves Engineering to confirm soils in, uh, many portions of the site, and, uh, it is all good sandy, gravelly materials. Uh, the Engineering Department is looking for us to, uh, provide one more test pit location at the front portion of the site where we're proposing an infiltration basin. Um, and again, that's just to confirm that we have, um, adequate offset to seasonal high groundwater cable. But, uh, with the soils there, uh, we think that would be just more of a formality, um, as we do have other testing throughout the site that is consistent. Um, we, there were some concern from some of the, um, neighbors, and historically, they've had some concerns about the elevation of the site. Um, and we had made some, uh, revisions in, in prior applications, make sure that we keep the site as low as possible so that this building fits in with the neighborhood, um, as well as possible, that it's not towering above it. Uh, we are raising the elevation just for drainage purposes by a couple of feet, so that we can get positive drainage. Um, and we're using quite a bit of country drainage to, uh, direct water into the infiltration basin. Uh, so we're trying to keep the elevations as close to possible, as close as possible to what is existing there right now. This is a one-story office building. Uh, we will be providing the, uh, elevation and floor plans. Those were presented to the zoning board. Um, the building is residential, have a clapboard, um, siding, a, a shingled roof, so, uh, it is, and it is again, one-story. So we believe that it, it will fit in well with, uh, the surrounding residences, although, uh, we do get good separation and we are providing quite a bit of, uh, landscaping and screening, particularly to, uh, number 239, which is a house that is in the front portion, uh, that abuts on Main Street. That is our, our abutter to the south. So, uh, we do provide quite a bit of screening, and, uh, we are providing, uh, some down shaded, um, lighting. There was one comment from the Engineering Department that there is a touch of overspill, uh, by like a tenth or three tenths of a foot candle. Um, we can modify that slightly, but really, all of the lighting is, is low impact and directed at the perimeter and into the site, so we're not shining any lights towards the neighbor at the perimeter and shining into the parking areas and the driving aisle leading up to the building. So, uh, we're trying to be conscious of, uh, any effects um, to any of the abutters. This isn't, uh, obviously, it's a medical, uh, dental use, which would primarily have, uh, daytime hours, you know, when you get in the winter time, maybe, uh, when it gets dark really early, there might be some, uh, some of the lights on, but it's not something where lights, um, site lighting would be on at 11 o'clock at night. So this is something that would be, um, really minimally, uh, invasive on, on, on anybody in the neighborhood. So I'd like to point that out as well. Um, we did, um, one other item that, uh, was brought up by the Engineering Department. There is an existing water service that is stuffed onto the site. Um, and there is also, um, a cross-country sewer lateral, um, that comes onto the site. So we will not be proposing to go into Main Street. As everybody knows, Main Street was recently, uh, redone. So, uh, there is no, there's a moratorium, five-year moratorium on, on cutting into Main Street. We are not proposing to cut into Main Street. Uh, but we will have to check the, uh, how, the status and, and the shape that the existing sewer lateral, uh, coming into the site is in, if that needs to get lined or improved, uh, we'd have to address that accordingly. So, uh, we acknowledge that, and, um, will be taking care of that and dealing with the, uh, the engineering and DPW as far as that is concerned. Um, back to the drainage. Um, again, we kept everything, uh, as really low impact as possible. We have an infiltration basin that's on the southerly side of the site, adjacent to the access driveway. That will handle, uh, all of our impervious areas for the site. There is a pond that abuts us to the north, and, uh, to address any water that comes onto the site, if, if the pond were neat, would overtop, we are bypassing that with, uh, a 24-inch diameter uh, overflow pipe that would, uh, route that through the site to where it really goes now if it overflowed, which is an existing drainage channel that is on the southeastern side, uh, of the site, which flows in the direction of Main Street. So, uh, again, that has all been reviewed by Graves Engineering, and, uh, I, I believe they're, they're in agreement with the, the site design as we have it. Um, again, with a few finer, fine modifications and tweaks and a couple of details, but, uh, I think in the overall scope of it, um, they agree with how we are, uh, are dealing with site drainage on this site. Um, I, I think I've covered a lot of the main topics. Um, I'd put it back to the, the chair if they have any questions or comments, um, regarding what we are proposing here.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Grenier. Um, I'll go around the board. Mr. Rotalakis? Steve, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm all set with this. It's, it's half the size and essentially half the parking of the Zachariah proposal, so.
Yep.
I think, uh, and, uh, I, I trust the applicant will do, uh, what they said to, uh, ensure that, uh, it doesn't tower over the abutters.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rotalakis. Mr. Jerry?
Uh, I, I have no comments or questions. I agree with what, uh, Mr. Rotalakis, uh, has already stated.
Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Um, I don't really have any concerns. I, I think they have a, a long way buffer. I'm not saying that right. They have, there's a long way between this building and any of the other existing houses that are around it. So, and I, it looks on the plans as if they have very good vegetative buffering, as John said. Um, again, I'd like to see renderings of the building, um, to ensure that they're going to keep within the, uh, scope of the neighborhood, but I'm sure they will. Uh, but other than that, I have no comments right now.
Okay, Mr. Rao, if you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, one question on, I mean, I know the, uh, they suggested that they will be addressing some of the engineers and town planners' comments. One comment relating to, um, the sewer pipe connection to the main engineer. Town engineer said it's very old and needs to be replaced, and it's AC pipe, which I, I believe it's asbestos cement pipe. So, um, I, I think that should be explained a little bit more in terms of that it is going to be properly, uh, taken out and properly disposed of, uh, whether as part of a conditional requirement, as part of our approval, or in their proposal. I mean, if it is asbestos cement related, you know?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rao.
Thank you.
Um, the only, only comment I have is, um, I agree that this, uh, this was a previously approved site plan for a much larger building than that's currently being proposed, so I don't necessarily have any issue with that. Um, I do have, um, a question or comment. I know there's some screening on the parking that's to the, um, this we call it the east of the building, um, that, as Mr. Grenier said, as, you know, we're in that dark phase right now where the, the, the daytime, it's not light till later in the morning, and it certainly gets darker earlier in the evening. And I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done other than the trees that are, that are, um, on the landscaping plan for the areas around 3 Irida and 1 Irida Road to help with the, uh, the spillage of light that's going to come from automobiles, uh, whether it's, it's planting, additional shrubbery, or maybe a fence or something to that effect. I don't know if you've gotten that in any thought or any comment.
I, I think if I could, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, John, you can correct me, uh, I, I think there's a fence there that we need to show on the plan. Um, but there's also other vegetation there that, uh, this, these plantings will be complementing. So, um, the intent is to give it a good, um, a good buffer. I mean, uh, the, the client is intent on making sure that, uh, they do not have overspill onto the neighbors. So, uh, we're happy to, um, you know, embellish upon that. Isn't there a fence there, John?
I, I believe there is a fence there, Richard. And, um, and, and Steve, to your point, um, which is a good one. If, if cars are pulling into those parking spaces and then, you know, they might be shining their headlights towards, um, some of those properties. Uh, I'll go take a look at that, uh, confirm the fence and see what other vegetation is there. If we need to supplement it a little bit, um, I, I, I think that would be a good idea. So we'll take a look and.
And just so, just so you know, I see our, our client shaking his head, yes, he's, he's intent on, on screening that well. So, um, I, I think we can address that. And I would note, um, um, Mr. Thomas, that, uh, it's my mistake. I thought that the elevations and the, um, um, the renderings of the building would have been, and the, and the floor plan would have been in this package. It's my fault. I, I kind of thought it was in the ZBA package and it would have gone over, but we'll get that in right away.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, that satisfies my questions. Um, this is a public hearing. Um, if there is anyone in the public that wishes to be heard, um, please give your name and phone, uh, name and address. Um, and I will create a list and I'll get to your questions. I would like to just mention that there are comments, um, that we're waiting for responses for comments to the Graves, uh, letter as well as town letter that may address your questions that you may have. So, um, just be mindful of that. So, um, with that, I'll open it up to public comment.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you. Can I have your name and address, please?
Yes, this is Karen O'Neill, and I live at 6 Thessalon Drive. Um, I'm at the abuttery for the property, uh, on the west side, and I just have a couple of comments and, um, one question.
Excuse me, can I, I need to wait until I get a list of all potential speakers, so if you don't mind.
I apologize.
No, no, no worries. Thank you. And I'll just wait a couple more seconds, see if there's anybody else in the audience that wishes to have, uh, questions. I guess there isn't at this moment, so I will, uh, open the floor to Mrs. O'Neill. Please, uh, I know you said 6 Thessalon Drive. Please go forward with your question.
I think I just unmuted myself when I was sent in.
You are all set now, yes.
Okay, sorry, technology, right?
No worries.
As I said, I just have a couple of comments and, um, one question. So, uh, the comments are, um, that I've lived, um, at, um, my property, uh, for many years, and we've been anxiously waiting for a, um, usage to go in behind us. This lot's been vacant, as you know, since 2009, so in looking at the plans, I have to echo what I've heard the planning board say this evening as far as it seems like a good, um, match, and it's half the size of what they were talking about. Um, Dr. Zachariah was going to build in 2015. Um, so I'd have to say I'm comfortable with, with that and what I've seen so far. Um, I have one correction on your site plan. It's nitty gritty, but, uh, you have, uh, me listed or the O'Neill household listed at 6 Thessalon Drive and 8 Thessalon Drive, and we only live in one of the houses, so. Um, 8 Thessalon Drive is my neighbor's, James and Lynn Urso. And I'm at 6 with Brian and Karen O'Neill.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
Do you have any? On that, we did, I just figured you had two homes.
Fine, and the ownership, but not on the property taxes, right?
Well, thank you for pointing that out. Do you have any other questions or comments that you'd like to?
My only other question is, um, when is the Conservation Commission meeting going to be held? Because I'd like to, um, be able to view that.
Mr. Ricker?
The, it's the third, um, third, third Tuesday of this month.
Very good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. I will wait one more moment to see if there's any other, uh, public comment.
Mr. Bulleye, if I could just clarify, it is the 19th of, of the month, the conservation.
Thank you, Mr. R.
In case, in case she's listening.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. I will take that as the, uh, public comment is closed for right now. Um, I would, um, I guess, obviously, we have to wait for conservation and other, um, items to be addressed. So we would like to have a continuance, so I would entertain, uh, continuing this hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the 235 Main Street Site Plan and Special Permit until Thursday, February 4th at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Rao?
In favor.
Mr. Bulleye is in favor as well. So we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, John.
Have a good night.
Take care.
Um, that pretty much takes care of our public hearing, uh, processes. Our, our next item of business is new business, is to discuss and vote on a partial release, uh, of a bond for Glendale Avenue subdivision and the amount of $11,000. I would, if, if there's any comment relative to this partial release, I'll first go around the board. Mr. Rotalakis?
I, I have no comment.
Uh, Mr. Jerry?
No comment.
Mr. Thomas?
I have no comment.
And I have no comment either. I would entertain a motion to accept the release of the partial bond.
I, I move that we approve the, uh, reduction in the bond, uh, for the Glendale Avenue subdivision by $11,000 as requested by the Apple.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotolakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Next item of business is to discuss and vote on recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to proceed with the layout and adoption of Commerce Road as a public road. I'm going to take questions from the board, questions or comments. First, Mr. Rotolakis.
I, I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Jerry?
No questions or comments.
Mr. Thomas?
I have no questions or comments.
And I have no questions or comments either. I will entertain a motion to forward the recommendation.
I, I move that we recommend to the Board of Selectmen to proceed with the layout and adoption of the Commerce Road as a public way.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotolakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Our next item of business is old business, and Mr. Rotolakis will need to recuse himself from this action. This is to discuss and vote on the issuance of a bond for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond. So this is a bond for site plan approval, special permit, DSM Realty Shoots, the LP 700 to 200 to 228 Hartford Turnpike in the amount of $109,576.25. Do we have any questions or comments relative to this issuance of the bond? Mr. Jerry?
No questions or comments.
Mr. Thomas?
Nope, no questions.
Bernie, this is, I believe it's, is Mr., is Mr. Rao going to weigh in on this one?
Because? No, not on this one. No, it'll just be a four-person vote. The DocuSign, after you vote, Emily will be sending out the DocuSign document tomorrow, as well as anything else you need to sign from tonight's meeting.
So Mr. Rao does not need to?
Mr. Rao does not participate in this one, no.
Okay, I just saw the special permit got me, got me confused for a moment. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we issue the bond for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond.
In the amount?
Can you give me that one more time? I move that we issue the bond for Edgemere Crossing at Flint Pond for $109,576.25.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. I believe that's all that's print to talk about this evening. Once again, I do wish Mel the best, and obviously thank him very much. And we'll continue to stay in contact and, and basically good night. Thank you very much, and thank you for everybody for tuning in. Stay safe, and we'll see you next month.
Should we close it?
Yes, I'm probably going to have to ask you to give me a motion, yes, Steve.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotolakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you, and?
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Bye, bye.
Good night.